All right, we'd like to welcome you to our Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 6th, 2024. Please let the record show that all members of the city council are present as well as members of the city staff and members of the public. We would especially like to welcome those members of our planning commission with us tonight. Thank you for being here. Our pledge allegiance tonight will be by Counselor Richter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Counselor Richter. I've asked Mr. Brooks if he would offer our invocation tonight.
Our Father in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this evening and express our appreciation unto thee for the many blessings which thou has bestowed upon us. We thank thee especially, Father, for the free country that we live in and all the freedoms that we enjoy. We call upon thee at this time to bless those leaders of our country, that their minds and hearts may be open and receptive to thy guidances. They make decisions on our behalf, and we ask thee also to bless us this evening, that as we discuss the affairs of Riverdale City, that thou might bless our council and mayor to do those things which they should. Father, again, we're grateful for these opportunities to live here and enjoy this country that we live in, and especially for our small community, and ask that thou might watch over us and bless us always. In this we do, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We'll now move on to public comment. This is a time for people to address the city council regarding any concerns or ideas they might have. No action will be taken during the public comment. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you do come up to the mic, state your name and the city in which you reside. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports. The first is the mayor's report. I just have a couple of things. There was a senior center meeting held on Friday, and all the, or many of the elected officials from the county gathered at Weber Human Services to discuss senior centers and funding going forward. Mr. Carden accompanied me, as well as Miranda Rizzi from our senior center, and it was a pretty interesting meeting. They put a chart up, and it talked about what each city was doing as far as offering senior services, what they offered, you know, how many days a week they had meals. And then the next column was what the county was providing for them, and it had a dollar amount and the number of employees. And then the next one was, it had something to do with what the county was providing as well. And Riverdale was at the very bottom, and I think Roy was getting about 96,000, and they had a director and several employees under. Oh, it said what the city provided. That's right. The last column is what the city provided. And Roy provided a building, 24 hours, all the maintenance, everything in a building. And it had the terrorists, I think they got about 50,000, and they had five-day-a-week meals. Anyway, I won't go into too much detail, but at the bottom was Riverdale, and we were receiving nothing from the county, which was kind of shocking, because even Hopper has a .125 employee, gets like 5,000, and that's a month, I guess. Or no, it's a year. Is it a year? Let's see, it was, it must have been a year. It was a year. But Riverdale got nothing, but they provided five-day meals, and we received nothing as far as like meals on wheels. We had our own employees, we had a building we provided, and I think it was kind of shocking to some of the people in the meeting, like, Riverdale really gets nothing, and they provide all that, and you could feel some of the other mayors starting to dig their feet in. It didn't really get heated, but there was some tension as, as Riverdale, you know, as I kind of made the case that, hey, this really isn't fair. Our residents pay taxes into the county, and we should be getting something back. They're gonna have another meeting in five weeks, I think. It's gonna be an ongoing, they realized that it wasn't something they could solve in that meeting. It got, it didn't get heated, but it got kind of intense, the conversations, as, as other places. I think there's about 250,000 a year that they can give out, and Roy's getting 96, and the terrorists are getting 50, and it just, you could see the imbalance, and something needs to be done. Anyway, that'll be something we can talk about in a strategic planning meeting, what we want to do, what we want to try and get. But it was just very interesting. Thanks to Mr. Carden for going to that with me.
We have that, that hard copies of that presentation. If you guys are interested, we could scan it and get it to you. They didn't say we couldn't, did they?
No.
So we have that if you guys want.
That would be, they definitely should have it in a strategic planning or something. I saved my copy too, but if you have a digital copy or something, you can get to them. The legislative session is going on right now. I'm participating in several boards where they discuss different bills and how that board wants to, whether they want to oppose it or support it or stay neutral. There's one that's really interesting, it's the truth in taxation bill. I think it's Senate Bill 354.
I don't remember.
Anyway, it would make it so that in order to do a tax increase, you had to hold an election to decide whether the residents wanted to go through the truth in taxation process or not.
Every time?
Every time. Now, you can imagine that this bill has a lot of support at the state level right now, because the residents really like that idea. Also, I don't think any residents would vote in favor of having a truth in taxation, and the last part that's bad about it is Roy, I think it was Roy held, or Weber County, one of the two held some sort of election about something, it cost $60,000.
It was Roy, yeah.
Anyway, it's a big deal, so that's something that's, it's gaining traction in the legislature because the residents, or the citizens are very supportive of it, you know? And it would effectively take away our ability to raise taxes without having an election or, you know, and-
How far out does election have to be? I mean, can it piggyback on a November election?
I don't think it can. I think it has to be a couple of weeks before or something. It has, I'd have to double check on that. The Utah League of Cities and Towns has come out against it, obviously. Today, I was on the Ogden Weaver Chamber Commerce, and they, Mayor Dandoy convinced them to be in opposition to it, because it would have a pretty negative effect. It would effectively make it so we couldn't raise property taxes. And so, so there's that. There's several others that are really interesting too, but we'll kind of try and keep you in the loop if some of those start to come up to the top, and we need to do something about And that's all I have for this meeting. City council reports, anybody want to report on their assignments for this meeting at all? No, seeing none, okay. Presentation number three, introduction of Bonnie Young, the CERT program volunteer coordinator for Riverdale City. Chief Shawley.
Very excited about this. We've talked a few times, had a meeting, and she has graciously volunteered to help us out with CERT, which has been a challenge, but one of the things that really kind of started driving this was our flood event, where we saw that we do have CERT members in Riverdale City. They simply have not been organized or kept up over the years. Bonnie's already kind of taken off running. She's got a list of our CERT members, she knows who our CERT members are, she knows where they are, and the ability to reach out to them and start recruiting them back. She's also reached out to Leighton City, and they have a strong CERT program, and they do annual refreshers, and they also do their scenario quite often, so we can jump in that and send our people to there and keep their education up too. So I'm gonna let her kind of say a little bit about herself. I was gonna read her bio, but I think she can do a lot better job than I can reading her bio, so. Now, you can read your bio.
Great, okay. Hi, my name is Bonnie Young, and in 2013, I retired after 20 years in the Texas Department of Criminal Justice as an investigator. My husband and I moved here to Riverdale to be closer to his father, who lives in Leighton. Upon arriving here, I decided that I was gonna start my new career as a real estate agent, and did a great job, enjoyed it very much, loved meeting the people and everything. But in 2018, I discovered an organization called Team Rubicon, which is a veteran-led disaster response organization. So I started volunteering with them as their membership coordinator for the state of Utah. Found it was something that I enjoyed very much, so a year later, I stepped up to the territory level, serving as the membership and mobilization coordinator for five states across the northwest portion of the US. Really enjoyed it, still loved my real estate career, but I had to make a decision on which was more important to me, and I chose helping victims of disasters. And so in 2021, I became a full-time employee for Team Rubicon. Still there, and I serve, as serving as their senior mobilization associate and one of their agency executives. I oversee 11 states, and also Hawaii, Alaska, and the territory of Guam, so it keeps me pretty busy there. But people who are affected by disasters are such a passion for me, that even on my time off from work, I volunteer with other organizations. So I'm working with the Red Cross as part of their workforce engagement supervisor, and then I also serve as the Region One VoAD Vice President for the state VoAD. So I'm really excited to be here, really excited to start moving forward with the Riverdale CERT, and looking forward to just having an excellent CERT team. Thank you.
So you can see why we're happy to have her.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So kind of moving forward, we're gonna, me and Rich are gonna meet with her, and we're gonna start looking at our volunteer paging systems and who's on that. She wants to start doing a campaign of advertising with our people to kind of hopefully boost our numbers. She's very passionate, as you see, so she's gonna be a huge asset for her. She's also agreed to start attending the county CERT meetings, so Riverdale City can stay up on what's happening in the county. So should be pretty exciting, something long overdue, it's just getting somebody in there that we could manage it, so.
Awesome.
Any comments for the chief? Any questions?
Do we know how many CERT members we have?
How many do we have, Bonnie?
We have almost 60.
There you go.
Good.
See, she's already all over it.
How far does that go back that you find those? Because I haven't seen, I'm sorry, mayor?
Yeah.
I haven't seen CERT training advertised for quite some time.
Everything's being trained to the county level, so that's where the advertisements are coming from is counties, so that might be why you're not seeing them. But all the training's happening at the county unless the cities have taken on doing their own CERT training.
And so you're just, when you say about 60, those are the people in the city?
The city.
Okay, all right.
And we kind of saw that during the flood. They started coming out, and then we started matching them up to CERT members, and we started making them leads and helping them support the other volunteers, and it worked out really well. I think, if I recall, I think we had 15 to 20 identified CERT members that come out and supported us on that, so.
I just want to say thank you. That's wonderful, like, to get somebody with your qualifications, not just the passion, but your qualifications. And the thing I like about CERT is it is in the community, like, we love our first responders, you guys are great, but in an emergency, you may or not be, you know, may or may not be in our community. You have other, your family, you've got homes in other places and stuff, but the disaster that's happening in Riverdale, there's nobody that's more vested in the Riverdale disaster than the people that live here. And so that's why I'm super excited about this, and to see it get going, because those people will already be in the city, hopefully, and will have, hopefully, a lot of passion about helping with the river, just so. Thank you, thank you so much. I mean, what a, what an absolute gem to find that in Riverdale, you know? Our little community had that, so that's great.
Well, and I think we really saw it during the flood, too. There's nobody we were gonna keep up on that sandbagging without our volunteers.
Yeah. Where do you live, Bonnie? If you don't, okay. That's, that's good enough.
Up on 40, 50, and 600.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Right off the river.
Yeah. Well, good. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the January 16th council work session and council meeting. Any corrections or changes to those minutes?
I just had one on item number six in the council meeting minutes. There's a word that says "meeting," but it meant discussion. It says that there was no action taken during the meeting, but it meant during that discussion.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, any others? All right, Counselor Arnold.
Move to approve the meeting minutes that are stated within the packet with Counselor Hanson's suggestion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Consent item number two, consideration to ratify the planning commission election results for Kent Anderson as chair and Amy Ann Spires as vice chair of the planning commission. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you, mayor. I will just note, as I noted in the work session, there was unanimous election voting held by the planning commissioners for these selections within their body. It's two-year appointment per their bylaws, and for what say I have, I would endorse the selection that has been presented to you tonight from my position. And there are obviously, there are four of them here that are in support of this opportunity by the city council. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Arnold.
Move to approve or ratify the planning commission election results for Kent Anderson as chair and Amy Ann Spires as vice chair of the planning commission for Riverdale City.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. And I will add my comments. The planning commission knows how impressed I am with them and how thankful I am, and I think the choice is correct, too. I completely support it as well, and that's saying something, because it's a very accomplished group that we have right now. And so saying that those are the right people to be the chair and vice chair is quite an accomplishment, so thank you. And like we've said, there's a lot on your shoulders now, so thank you for all you do. Okay, we'll now move on to the action items. Number one, discussion regarding a proposed amendment to the Riverdale City Fiscal Year 2024 budget. Mr. Carden.
Thank you, mayor. So as we kind of talked in the work session, this is just to move the funding for, we had an employee who retired who was full-time doing multiple jobs. We separated those, moved code enforcement to the police department and fire inspection to the fire department. So now that those employees have moved, this is just moving the money. It's not an increase, it's technically a budget reallocation. We're just moving those funds, and it'll just help make it cleaner for next year when we get during the budget process, because the line items should match up a little better. I'm happy to answer any questions either now or after the public hearing, whatever you'd prefer, man.
Any questions for Mr. Carden right now? Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. All right, this is just to clean up, you said it's just for the, from the shift of employment from the, from the full-time to the two-part time?
Right.
Okay.
And we moved part of the wages, we moved the code enforcement wages with adoption of the regular budget in June, because we knew that was gonna happen, but we weren't quite sure what was gonna happen with the fire inspection, and so we just left it in Mike's department rather than move it and then have something else happen and then try to move it again.
I do remember we talking about this, and, okay.
We talked about it in the budget meeting in June, and then we also talked about it a couple times in the fall, when you guys were discussing various things with like fire inspections and those kind of things, so.
Okay, so is there gonna be another tweaking of where, where funds are shifted to the left or right based on what the actual revenues are as opposed to projections?
We, a lot of times, like, at the end of the year, yeah, we'll do, yeah, or June, a lot of times we'll do a budget amendment with that, yes.
Okay, but, all right, all right, now, because I'm remembering this conversation from before, but now, okay, I got it.
Any other questions that I can answer?
Sometimes.
Okay, thank you. Right, action item number two, public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding the proposed amendment of the, or amendments of the Riverdale City Budget for Fiscal Year 2024. We would need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Seeing no public comments, we would need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. The public hearing is closed. We now will consider the Resolution 2024-02 amending the Riverdale City Budget for Fiscal Year 2024. Is there any further questions for Mr. Carden? Or for Mr. Brooks, any of the city staff? Seeing none, a motion to be in order?
I will move to approve Resolution 2024-02 amending the Riverdale City Budget for Fiscal Year 2024 with the removal of Section 2, as it's not needed in this instance.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, second from Counselor Richter. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Yes.
I did say yes, not yep.
I did say yes. Did I say yes?
That's Bart's thing. It's gotta be yes.
Okay, passes unanimously.
I heard a yes, I don't know what he's talking about.
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to the comment section of our meeting. Are there any comments from the city council for this meeting? Counselor Hanson?
I just wanted to say thank you to the former chair. I've been watching the meetings for the last couple of years on the planning commission, and you have done just amazing job. You're just so professional, so good at keeping order, and I just wanted to say thank you, because that's not an easy position to be in, but thanks for your service in doing that.
Anyone else? Okay, comments from the city staff?
Housekeeping things to start with. We will get you guys your Chromebooks as soon as we collect the two that are still out. So Steve has one, and Karina has one, so can you reach out to her maybe tomorrow? And I'll reach out to Karina and see if they can drop those by, and then we'll get those cleared off until you, so you got them. And Stacy, I gotta get you in to meet with Stacy, too. She threatens me with that all the time, so the sooner you can get in there, the better.
I think they're gonna do it next week. I talked to her while you were-
Are they? Okay, good. I told her I would get with you, but that's been a couple weeks. And last but not least, it's kind of funny how things work around here. We go through cycles, when we'll lose a number of employees, they always seem to group up, and then we go quite a while without losing one, and we happen to be in a cycle that's just kind of starting. We know a couple others that are likely going to be leaving that have reached their 30 years or had other opportunities presented to them, and one of them happens to be sitting here tonight, so this is going to be his last meeting tonight, and I wanted to let you all know that Mike Eggit has accepted another position with a different city, so we're gonna feel that one. That's always tough when you lose somebody with that kind of institutional knowledge, and Mike has been huge. The time that he's been here, it's been, we're coming up on 11 years. It went fast, I remember when we picked him up, but that was one of Larry's hires there, so Larry was still here, but some of the things that we've had to do just in the last couple of years, these massive projects have been phenomenal things, some of these zoning changes, that whole floodplain thing, I mean, these are not just little things, they've been huge, and Mike handles those things. You guys see his paperwork. I mean, there's no question, you know, those packets and stuff are loaded with those things, and I doubt we're gonna see that kind of detail again. So Mike has been really valuable to the city, and he's done a good job for Riverdale, and I know that Centerville's gonna be blessed to have his talents and his services, and he notified me of that when I was looking for my flight in LA yesterday, and it was a long flight home, knowing that I was gonna have to replace him, so. We did issue the job posting yesterday, and as of just 3 o'clock this afternoon, we'd already had four applicants submit, so I'm hoping we can find a good quality candidate, but it's gonna be hard to fill Mike's shoes. But we wish him well, and this was the last meeting, he's gonna be here, because we have a holiday, actually, the 19th would be his last day, but it's a holiday, so he will be gone by the time we have our next meeting. So Mike, good luck, and thank you very much. He's been phenomenal, so we wish him well. Mike, do you want to maybe say something? I told him I wouldn't embarrass him, but we might as well to go for it, so.
I figured this might happen, because that's Steve's way of doing business, so it's kind of hard when you think about what you might say in this kind of setting, so hopefully I say what I mean, and at least you can feel my expression of emotions about it. I've grown a lot working here at Riverdale and learned a lot, and I hope that the city has benefited greatly from those opportunities. I have put a lot of passion and heart and soul into what I do, and I value my work. You probably can see that in what I provide. Sometimes people say I'm a little too organized or put together, sometimes I put a little bit more than I need to, but I like to cover all the bases, and I hope that that shows. And I really appreciate the opportunity, the trust that was given to me by, by City Administrator Hanson to take this job and to work with so many great city administrators over the years and great mayors, and, you know, it just, I don't know, it's bittersweet, it's kind of one of those things where it was really hard to make the decision, but it seemed right for my family, and we talked, and I feel like it's right, but I, it's gonna be hard. I was telling Steve earlier today that I just hope that whatever decisions are made to fill this position are made right, because I am protective of the legacy that we've worked together as a team, and I feel like there is a team legacy there, and I really hope that you'll make the right decision and hold my replacement equally accountable to do the best that they can do. I know sometimes I haven't always got along with some of you, or even got a little heated in some meetings, and I appreciate your patience with me, because that's my passion coming through. But I do appreciate working with all of you and all of our interactions through the years, and I wish Riverdale the very best as you continue forward. I really see a lot of great opportunities with West Bench, and I hope that you get the best outcome as you move forward, working with Steve and future staff on that, and appreciate your time. Thank you. I will say, I forget to say this, but I really love my planning commission, and that's gonna be really hard for me to leave behind working with those great people. You have probably the best planning commission I've ever worked with, and I sincerely mean that. Those seven individuals are awesome. You're very blessed, and I hope that you understand how awesome they are, and there's a huge hole in my heart that will be left behind not working with them every other Tuesday, so I just want you to know, I really, really appreciate them. You have great community. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from city staff or from the council? We can, if you guys want to say anything.
I can't believe what, you're great. I thought we were gonna have a life for out of you, but this is, this is, you're a natural here. Boy, that hurts. Anyway, best to you.
Come on up to the mic, yeah, you bet. Let's open it up just a little bit. City staff?
Kent Anderson, Riverdale City.
Planning Commission Chair.
Can we match what they're gonna pay him?
I'll try to, quick. Just to be at the police department, Mike's always been a good team player, he's always willing to talk to you, he's open-minded. He's, you know, we have that team atmosphere here in Riverdale, and it requires every department head and every employee to work together, and he's always facilitated that. And so whoever his replacement is has some issues to fill, and we hope that he'll have the same attitude and demeanor towards his fellow coworkers across the city. And there was news to me, too, when I saw, I was like, what the heck is this job opening? But we're gonna miss him, and like I said, it's been a pleasure working with him, and we wish him well from the police department side, and hopefully we can replace him with the same attitude and teamwork atmosphere that he's provided, so, thanks.
Counselor Arnold?
I would say you and I have had somewhat of an adversarial relationship, but it was because you repeat the stuff that's already in the packet. It's not because you don't have the stuff in the packet, it's just that we're in the meeting and you're repeating what's in the packet, and I feel I'm prepared, so I don't need to hear it again, but, you know, I really am gonna miss you. It's good to have the packets prepared like that, that the time I've been on the council, you've educated me, you know, through 11 years that I've been here that whole time, so it's, yeah, you've been educating me for where it is, so just, just know it wasn't it's, yeah, you've been educating me for where it is. So just, just know it wasn't anything personal. It was just like, I read it already. You don't need to tell me. So.
I got better near the end, I think. I learned with time.
Thank you.
I feel a little robbed. I I was looking forward to the opportunity to meet and work with you. I had good reputation and everything, but wish you and your family the very best.
Centerville's really lucky. It's important to have someone who's passionate about what they believe in and you've definitely showed that, especially since I've been on the council and I appreciate the back and forth and that you're willing to educate and and a team player. Yeah, even with us. I really appreciate that and I do wish you the very best. And us, too.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to comments from the mayor. This really does hurt Mike, like um, I am not super surprised that Mike is not here for life. Um, I think, I think he's always had bigger aspirations and bigger. I think he's on a trajectory for something bigger and uh, this step, whatever it is, to a bigger city at least and uh, it's not City Administrator, is it? Okay, anyway, um, yeah, I think you're gonna do great. I I know you're gonna do great, whatever you're doing down there. And uh, I I gotta tell you, I had a little bit of an anxiety attack driving from my work to here tonight because I I slipped back on Pacific to try and avoid all the traffic. And as I was going behind Ross and I thought, oh my gosh, like Mike knows all about the Birch Creek and how it floods down here. And he's got so much knowledge of from being here. I was like, does anybody even know the stuff that Mike knows? Like, it was really just kind of a a pit in my stomach as I thought about all the things you know. Last Wednesday, I reached out to Mike because uh, people are starting to there's a little bit of a stirring about the Unity Property. Um, they're taking down some trees and I thought I've got to find out this history of this and just be reminded again. And it's late. I wonder if Mike's even there. It's late in the afternoon on a Wednesday, I think. I'll just email him and say, hey, can you just remind me of what happened when it was changed, the zoning, what happened? And I don't know what time it was. It felt like it was about five or six at night. You know, I sent it and ten minutes later, here's a super detailed thing of exactly what happened, how the property change went, the zoning, and this is what, how the, and I was just like, wow, that was impressive. And and I had no idea you were leaving, like, so that's super, that's super hard. And then he's also done so much with our moderate income housing. I mean, the the those documents are giant that he has made and he's worked with the state. He's honestly kind of a leader in the state as far as those projects. Um, they rely on him because he's always ahead. He's kind of the guinea pig. They give an assignment and he actually does it and turns it in. And then they say, oh, this is how we're gonna do it, I guess. Because we have a guy that's doing it. So we are really gonna miss you, Mike, and I just hope it's great for you and your family and uh just, you know, just wish you all the, all the best.
I'm always a phone call away.
Yeah.
So if you have questions.
You might regret that. Actually, we might have to call you about some stuff.
At least until you get the legs under you. Like I said, I want to protect my legacy working here. So give me a call if you have questions.
And I I really did. I thought, let's see, is he gonna have time to train somebody? And then I thought, no, well, Steve said he gave two weeks notice, like we're not even gonna be able to have him pass anything on, so.
What are you going to do?
It's Community Development Director job with Centerville.
Oh, okay.
How many people are in Centerville, you know?
Right, uh, population's about seventeen thousand and change, seventeen thousand five hundred about.
Great.
Yeah.
Mr. Brooks, did you have something?
Um, I mean, I could just, we we jumped on this immediately just because we knew the urgency on this and Mike and I met for a couple hours today because I'm concerned about it as well. And I learned more about Planning Commission than I've known for a long time and and will continue to meet because I don't want this to prolong. We can't really wait. But one of the things we're finding immediately, and this is part of the reason uh, Mike went down there, but uh, you know, as much as we complain sometimes about our process and our survey and stuff, there are still times when we're behind and this is one of them. The early indicators that we're seeing is um, our salary is not up there where some of these other places are. You've seen this. You've been getting those same complaints with our police officers with another mayor and stuff. So we've got to stay on top of this. I I think we'll be okay. Um, I just, we need to move fast. And I'd love to get somebody in here before Mike left, but I don't know how realistic that is, you know? So in the meantime, he's gonna have to try and educate me as best as he can, which is a little bit scary, but um, we'll we'll make it work. And Mike's been very accommodating and um, I got pages of notes just from today and we'll continue to do that. But we are gonna maybe find a little bit of a challenge on the salaries. We're not where some of these other cities are. So and that's one of the things that we'll have to be looking at uh, come survey time and see how much difference that makes to get us back up there so we can compete. So.
The notes are in your hand ready?
Yeah, you'll never be able to translate those out. But uh, no, Mike's been very good and and I knew he would be. That's not even a question. So we will feel this. It's it's a good hit for us. So. But we do wish him well. And you know, I tell these guys all the time because I know he's a little bit nervous telling me that yesterday, but when they have these opportunities, they should take them. I don't ever blame them for that, you know, if it's a better thing for them and for their families, they need to do it. So it's a little kind of closer to his house, you know, more money, the whole thing. I mean, it works out better. It's a good thing for him and it'll be a new environment, new everything, and we're gonna have to do the same thing. So, but we'll move on it quickly. If we could find somebody before he left, I'd be more than happy. We, but we opened it up and we'll see. There's a few out there, but we don't know. We'll have to see. And I've also consulted Mike on those, so um, we'll we'll keep in touch with you.
Okay. Moving on, I I did uh, we had a discussion last week, just a very cursory discussion about maybe having a a strategic planning meeting on a Saturday with just the City Council to really go in deep on some of these issues that we're facing. After some thoughts and some discussion, I really think it would be good if Mr. Brooks was there with with us. I'd like to find a date for that if we can and maybe we can work with with Ms. Maragoni. She can send out a, some sort of survey or something so we can decide what Saturday's gonna work for all of us. I'd like, you know, we're we're in February, so I'd like to get that done in the next three to six weeks, I think, um, if possible. Cody, Mr. Carden, do we know what what night we're gonna have the budget meeting? It seems like there's one that should be the either the the end of February or the first of March?
So we kind of talked about it internally and we had a day and then we've had a couple conflicts. We're gonna talk about it in staff meeting tomorrow. We were planning on trying to just do it after a City Council meeting. Um, it's really usually what we do at that first budget meeting is we just go over some of the capital um requests of the various departments in the city. So some of the bigger one-time purchase requests of the city. Um, so we were probably looking at maybe that first meeting in March. Originally, we were thinking the February twentieth, but it might be there in March. So we'll get back.
There's no action item. You're just presenting, so having a strategic planning right after that or soon after that would be.
Would you prefer to do it after they they come with their budget?
I think my biggest concern is we need to start with establishing the values and the priorities of the council before we get into the big, deep stuff so that we have a guiding, that we are all on, you know, have those guiding values.
Yeah.
And as long as we do that first, I don't think it matters either way.
And so far from what I've seen from the department, it's so sure there's nothing like huge or new or crazy or anything like that. It's fairly consistent with prior years, but but you never know, right? We do have a few. No, but we do have some needs with this building, too. We have a lot of broken windows and all sorts of stuff. Well, we always need new furniture. It's it's old, but you know, like, yeah, some of that depends on you guys. Yeah, maybe we can just seize it all, right?
It's a good deal right now.
Mayor has a friend.
So, so we'll get you a day as soon as possible. So we'd just like to talk to the department heads tomorrow.
Okay, well, just just know that we're gonna try and get a Saturday meeting in. Um, and and we want to really dig in and I I would welcome any, like, Counsel Hanson's thoughts on how the agenda should look, what we want to go into first. Um, I I would welcome that, the process, however we can make it better and most effective. Mr. Brooks, we would like to include you on that, but not necessarily make all the department heads come on a Saturday. So and we can figure out where we want to hold that as well. It would be a regular meeting. We would have to notice it and everything and and have an agenda, but okay. Um, so the budget you're thinking will probably be the first week of March?
Be the fifth is the day we're kind of looking at.
Okay.
And then usually what we've historically done is, I don't remember the day, but that first meeting in May, when we've adopted the tentative, then we've usually done a meeting following City Council meeting to go over it.
Right.
That would be May seventh.
Okay.
So we'll have a little bit of time between those days to get some of this other stuff done, the strategic planning and things like that.
Ms. Maragoni, I might as well just tell you in this meeting, uh, the Bonneville CTC would like to be on the agenda next, next meeting for a presentation. They have something for the council, so. Communities that care. Okay, I don't have anything else for this meeting. So with that, uh, we would need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned.